I want to call the June 20, 2019, meeting of the Farragut Municipal Planning Commission to order. We're going to start out with citizens' forum, and I'd like to remind everybody that on the back of the paper you might have picked up out at the door, we have the protocol for public comments at the meeting. If you wish to say something tonight, for one thing, we need you to fill out a blue card and hand it to Mark Shipley over here. And also, we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes per person if you have something you wish to say. Also, the citizens' forum now is for things that are not on the agenda. If there's something you wish to say or question you wish to ask that has to do with an item on the agenda, please wait until that time. I have a couple of things I'd like to say. Planning commissioners, today I signed up for the MTEST training that's in July. Mark sent us some information about it. When I called this afternoon, they still had spots available. So if you're interested in it, I just called. I couldn't get the website to work to make, to do it online, so I just picked up the phone and called them, and I'm signed up. So if anybody else is interested in doing that, the training will be held at the MTEST office, which is on the UT campus. And there's four hours, I think, isn't it, Mark, for training that we would get?
Yeah, mhm, yeah, four hours.
Okay. Mayor, I think you have a couple of comments to make?
Yes, tonight is last night for a couple of people. I think Nick is, will be moving off and into other things in your life. Good luck with that. We appreciate your service.
Thank you for having me. This was an amazing experience. I'm glad that y'all gave me the opportunity to be a part of this.
Well, let's hope we see you back here later on in life, okay?
Absolutely.
And the other one is, after many years on the planning commission, Ed Whiting will be retiring. This will be his last planning commission meeting, and we definitely appreciate his service and that he's given to the town. Ed will stay on the stormwater board as a member at large, and so we wish him well in retirement.
I appreciate all the things that the people in this commission have done and how well we have worked over these last dozen years, but time comes when it's time to go on.
Again, we appreciate your service, Ed.
Anybody else on the planning commission have any questions or comments at this point? Anybody in the audience have anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
We have a couple of items.
Yeah, we have a couple that are postponed. Items number seven and eight have been postponed at the request of the applicant.
Oh, okay.
Do I have a motion for that, please?
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
All those in favor? Opposed? Item number three, approval of the minutes of the May 16, 2019, meeting. Do we have any changes to this?
Not that I know of.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Item number four, discussion and public hearing on a right-of-way permanence for fiber-optic cable to be installed along portions of North and South Watt Road, Old Stage Road, Mcfee Road, Boyd Station Road, Virtue Road, Parkside Drive, Grigsby Chapel Road, Fritz Road, and Smith Road. MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Incorporated, applicant.
Well, this is obviously, as you can see on the screen, a very big project. This is like a town image of the overall project. The lines in red, let me turn the lights off, you might be able to see this a little better, if that's all right. Let's see. Okay, still hard to see those lines, but the lines that are in the red would be underground, and then the blue is over, overhead, existing overhead utility lines that they'll be utilizing. It's a very big project, obviously. It encompasses a large portion of the town's right-of-ways. The applicant is here to talk through, I think, the project, the phasing, the subject twos at your places. There were eight of those, and I can just go through those real quick. The applicant has indicated they are okay with these. Anything that's installed underground needs to be through directional boring, not open trenches and anything like that. Secondly, there will be a letter of credit that will be required in the amount of $20,000 for this project, and that would not be released until the entire project is finished and everything has been completely restored to its pre-installation condition. The third item would be that they're cognizant about pedestrian facilities, other utilities, irrigation and landscaping to try to avoid disruption to any of those, that all the work either has to be within existing right-of-ways or the 10-foot easement that's typically outside of the right-of-way, that any affected entities will be properly notified, that there's a pre-construction meeting for each phase of work with our engineering department to make sure that they talk through kind of the project for that particular area, any, you know, interesting things that they might need to be aware of and work together on. For example, traffic control, which is the number seven there, just making sure that we have proper traffic control in place, and that we're coordinating the work with perhaps other projects that might be going on at the same time, like there's some work out at Watt Road, for example, through TDOT. And then finally, on comment eight was, you know, there is an extension that's shown to the cell tower that's on the town's public works property. My understanding is this applicant has taken the fiber to the property line, to the edge of the right-of-way, and then another entity at some point in the future would extend to the existing cell tower, and they would be within an existing platted easement that's on the town's property, but that would have to be, you know, verified, obviously, before that portion would occur, but that's a separate project. So I'll just, with that, turn it over to the applicant, and they can maybe walk through this. We do have, you know, sections of the plan that are broken down, more or less, starting from the east side of the town, from Parkside Drive, coming through to the west. It will follow, you know, Grigsby Chapel Road. Again, part of this is overhead utilities, part of it's underground. Moving on, coming down through Smith Road, down Everett, and through, under Kingston Pike, to the west on Old Stage Road, and then back up north to Watt Road. Then in the southwest part of the town, it would be going down Mcfee Road to Evans, and then part of it would be going north along Virtue, and then south Virtue, and then coming, more or less, due southwest along Boyd Station Road. So that's kind of an overview of the project as far as the areas involved, and like I say, I can turn it over to the applicant, and they can maybe walk you through this in more detail, or if you have any questions.
Mark, I've got a general question.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a requirement for how much advance notice we give? Is it seven days or?
Not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge.
Any standard do we have?
There might be for the right-of-way permit that's handled through engineering. I'd have to double-check on that.
But is notification for any affected party, number five, for instance, we don't have any?
Not anything that I'm aware of, no.
That would be good to have, so we could put it on the website and on social media, kind of warn the area that something's fixing to happen in their area, so they'd know that to leave a little bit earlier to go another way.
Yeah. That was one of the things that we asked them to include, was kind of a general timeline of different portions of the project, which was included in your packet. And again, I think they could speak to that in more detail, what their public outreach efforts are. This is the same contractor, I believe, that did the underground fiber installation along Kingston Pike from Costco West to Concord Baptist Church a few months ago. So it's that, that's kind of what this would involve to a little bit larger scale.
Give us your name and address and your business.
Michael Sides, Forsight Group. I'm a subcontractor for the engineering firm for MCI Metro for this project, and I'm from Athens, Alabama.
An address for the company?
Yes, ma'am. Mike, I'm the outside plant engineer for MCI.
Can you come up to the microphone, please?
In Knoxville area. Our business address is 603 Warehouse Park Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Okay, thank you.
Do you guys have any questions about the build plan itself?
I have a question. The drawings that are shown here shows a little section on Kingston Pike at the intersection of Watt Road going west, but I couldn't see that anywhere on the permits or on the description. The little tabs going next to the legend box.
This section on this print here?
Yeah, I didn't see that anywhere in the permitting.
That may be, that should be on one of the permit applications. I'm not sure if Mark has included all the individual permits in the package?
I included all that I, all that I have. There's quite a few, obviously, for this project, and that was, I think, one of my comments a couple of weeks ago was just making sure that, you know, we had the application to address each aspect of the project. So I think what John's talking about, I guess, is this section over here.
Yeah, that's exactly it. And I couldn't find anywhere in the description, either in the description that you had provided, nor could I find it in the permits that described that section there on Kingston Pike.
Okay, well, I believe we'll have to review that. We should have sent that over with the packet, the original packet.
The question I have is, how do you determine what side of the road you're going to?
A lot of factors, available right-of-way space, existing utilities.
Would you mind speaking into the microphone, please?
Sorry. Existing utilities in the area, depending on what side of the road they're on. We may want to work around those or work with those, depending on how much space is available.
And our, and Mark, our permitting, we don't care, really, whether it's one side or the other?
Where would be, have the least disruption, I mean, is recommended, but it, as long as they do the, you know, use directional boring and minimize any damage to, you know, infrastructure and people that are abutting the affected property, then, you know, we're it, we don't really have a requirement that you have to be on a certain side of a right-of-way, for example.
Okay. And my last question is, on Grigsby Chapel Road, a part of it is underground and a part of it is aerial, and it looked like aerial physically is available, so I was curious as to what made the determination that you switched from one to the other?
Typically, it's just a cost analysis of depending on make-ready that has to be done on each individual pole. If it looks like there's going to be a lot of movement that has to happen, we don't want to disrupt other services or potentially replace a lot of poles unnecessarily, so we just do a cost analysis of whether underground versus aerial is most beneficial.
Okay. And actually, I said that was my last question, but it's not. I got one more. When I looked at the routing, and I was in Turkey Creek area, in front of Verizon, the Verizon store, and in front of Marshall's, there's some pipe sticking out of the ground where there's already installed, there's already been some digging there. Is that your work or is that somebody else?
It's possible. I believe the, we have built up two sections outside of the city limits along Turkey Creek.
This is in Farragut, a couple hundred yards in Farragut?
That I'm not sure. That could be, it could be another provider.
All of our, all of our.
Please speak into the microphone, would you please?
Sorry, Mike, Mike, again, with MCI Verizon. All the work we originally were permitted on, which was all along Kingston Pike, just a little bit under two miles, that has been completed and cleaned up. So I would forge to say it is not our, it is not our stuff.
What he's referencing is over on Parkside Drive, I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Parkside Drive in front of the Verizon store and in front of the Marshall's store along your proposed route for this particular cable. There's fresh cable sticking out of the ground in two locations there where some underground drilling has been already done. I'm curious.
Yes, yes, sir, yes. We have started to build Parkside Drive. I think there might have been a situation where we crossed into the Farragut by one of our crews, which as soon as we realized this, we stopped that construction.
Oops.
It could be an oops, yes, sir, or it could be another party. I would really need to look at it, but.
Thank you.
How do you go about notification? We have several neighborhoods that are going to be affected by this. How do you go about notifying these neighborhoods?
That's a great question. I'm glad you asked. So generally speaking, when Mark grants us a permit, and we know when we're going to start that project, we will send out a supervisor from Maztec, which is our prime contractor here in the Knoxville vicinity, and they will actually door-tag every residential door along that route.
And how much in advance would you anticipate?
Usually within, what we do is we call in locates, so we know we got 72 hours to kill, so that's when we door-tag.
Mark, was the staff satisfied with the previous stabilization efforts that occurred during the spring with the, with the same applicant?
Yeah, I mean, I would have to have a discussion with, you know, the field crew from engineering. It was obviously a wet time of the year. We had another utility that was also working in the general area, a lot of it, and so there was some areas that were messed up pretty bad for a while. I think a lot of that was the other utility that was working in the area. What I've personally seen, I've been satisfied with it. I haven't seen any, you know, major issues. The worst issues that I personally saw was up at Jamestown and Campbell Station, Kingston Pike area.
Our local gas provider that may have done some of that.
Yeah, and it was, again, it was a lot of rain and wet conditions, but yeah, then they have a lot bigger line that they were putting in. This is generally a four-inch bore with a two-inch conduit for this project, I believe, and it would be at least 36 inches in depth. So the only places that should have any disturbances where they have to daylight, you know, the project. So, but that's, again, what the letter of credit. One thing we'll do before we release the $10,000 letter of credit that we obtained for that work along Kingston Pike is we'll, I'll have, I'll ask the engineering staff, and I can join them if need be, to, you know, check that route and make sure everything is, you know, back to the pre-installation condition, and then we'll be able to release that one. So, and we would do the same with this one. It's a larger dollar amount, obviously, because it's a bigger project, but we wouldn't release or likely even lower the letter of credit until all those areas have been, you know, restored to their previous condition.
All right. Thank you.
And what's the anticipated overall time to complete this project?
Well, we're prepared to start this project immediately after we receive permits, and of course, we'll be getting, you know, section, Mark will issue us a permit, or actually the permitting department will, and, you know, we will, we will start that work, you know, within three days. As soon as, as soon as we know we're good to go, we'll call in locates, we'll tag doors in that area. So we're anticipating no longer than 90 days to be done with this entire route, cleaned up.
Will you be working on more than one section at a time?
If, if we're permitted to, yes, yes. We would prefer to get done, cleaned up, and out of here as soon as possible.
Any more questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion approved the right-of-way permits for the fiber-optic cable to be installed along all the streets, which I'm not going to rename, subject to the eight items as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Get back to us on that Parkside Drive, please.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Item number five, discussion and public hearing on a site plan for small cell support structures at 633 Heron Road and 11473 Parkside Drive. Maztec, AT&amp;T Mobility, applicant.
This request involves, actually, the original application had three locations, but one of them we found was in the city of Knoxville, so obviously, they'd have to go through them on that. The two locate, and that's the one that's in the city, they're at 11313 Parkside Drive. The two locations that are proposed in the town, the first is toward the end of Heron Road, at 633 Heron Road, and then the second one is at 11473 Parkside Drive, and that's generally the area where the eastern access to the Best Buy Shopping Center is. So that's the general area for these two. The, the comments that the staff have are at your places. Some of these are similar to the fiber project that you just reviewed. I would say this, on these small cell support structures, as you all know, we spent a lot of time really creating a new ordinance to try to address these and get ahead of most other communities, frankly, with these small cell support structures. They're not a cell tower. What they are is just a, kind of a, they're a smaller version, I guess, of a cell tower that you typically see in areas where there's a lot of cellphone activity, or there might be some, you know, poor coverage for whatever reason. And we're probably going to be seeing a lot more of these throughout the whole area, the whole country. When we created our telecommunications provisions, we had an expert in the field help us, Larry Perry. I know you all remember his guidance through our process, and he, you know, worked with the staff and you all and the Board of Mayor and Alman to try to, to make sure the regulations we put in place were consistent with state law and federal law, because to some extent, the town, we can only do so many things in this arena of regulation, because the state and the federal law supersedes what the town can do. In fact, shortly after we adopted our ordinance, the state created new telecommunications provisions that nullified many of our provisions, which we will be changing and updating. Only concern I have with that is, once we do that, something else is going to change, and that's going to be, need to be revised. So it's a, it's a constantly evolving arena, but I did want to mention that communities can't just say you can't have these, or you, you know, you, you can regulate them out, you can't do that. You do have to provide for them, and you can't treat them any different than other utilities, like electric, power, you know, gas, whatever. So there are certain things that the town, you know, can and cannot do. The subject twos that I had in relation to these locations, and let me just go through those. First of all, the poles proposed, this is the one at Heron Road. They are in the public right-of-way. The pole itself is 32 feet in height. Roughly, the diameter is eight inches. The antenna diameter is about 12 inches at the top. If you remember, the structures that were placed on Parkside Drive and Campbell Lakes Drive for Zayo about three years ago were much more obtrusive, frankly. I mean, this is a much more stealth design than what those were. You could see the attachments more with the Zayo structures, and as you can see, the pole is actually slightly lower in height in comparison to that overhead utility pole. So that's kind of what they're proposing out there on the Heron Road location, and I'll review the Parkside Drive one here in a minute, but some of the comments that remain, you know, we, to my knowledge, fiber optics have not been extended to either location at this point, and that will have to come before you all at some point. My understanding from the applicant is, until they, they get a, an agreement on location for these small cell structures, they don't like to order the fiber installation, so that's, that's what I've been told. The other things here are basically just making sure that all the structures are underground or within the pole. That's what number two is talking about, to make sure that there's not any above-ground structures related to this, that there's no interference with pedestrian facilities, driveways, utilities, irrigation, landscaping, those kind of things, that there is proper notification provided to all affected entities for this. We would have a pre-construction meeting at each of these locations with the town staff to make sure everybody's clear on the project, that the affected parties, in this case, it's just two locations, that they know about the project and its parameters and so forth, that the traffic control plans, as applicable, are in place, there's not any visibility obstructions created, that the structures are in the existing right-of-way. I will need to talk with the town attorney about the, the proposed structure on Parkside Drive, because ultimately, that will be a replacement light pole, similar to what Zayo did. What we are recommending, consistent with the town's telecommunication provisions, are that the location proposed on Heron Road be reconsidered, and they move that to a location on Parkside Drive. The, this would be consistent with the recommended hierarchy that's in our provisions. Basically, when an applicant is looking at the placement of these structures, they need to first go to the more intense zoning districts or busy street system. So for example, Parkside Drive is mostly zoned regional commercial, as opposed to Heron Road, which is mostly zoned residential. Residential is the least recommended location for these type of structures. And then secondly, Heron Road is a collector's street, as opposed to Parkside Drive, which is a major arterial street. So that would be consistent with the town's hierarchy for the placement of these type structures. I was told through an email by the applicant that, for some reason, they, they could not place it on Parkside Drive. I think that does need to be conveyed to the town as to why specifically, and certainly at a minimum, if that's in fact the case, the structure should be moved to the very end of. to the very end of Heron Road, still in the public right-of-way. Let me show you, there's, I took a couple of pictures. This is roughly the pole where they're proposing to put the, the structure. It would be about five feet from the curb, in between the street edge and the pole, the utility pole. And then the, the pole to the north of that, that's still in the public right-of-way, would be where the staff is recommending it as a worst-case scenario, if they can't relocate it to Parkside Drive. There are some trees in the general area that might be disturbed as a result of that work, I'm not sure. But I think if they could situate it back there, again, worst-case scenario, I believe it would be pretty hidden. There's a lot of existing vegetation, as you can see in that area. So, and it's right, pretty much right before you get to the retaining wall for JCPenney, so. And then in regards to the structure proposed on Parkside Drive, let's see, that one, as I mentioned earlier, it's over near the Best Buy Shopping Center. In order to avoid a situation where two poles are essentially 35 feet from each other in an area where you have underground utilities, we're asking the applicant, and actually recommending as a requirement, that they put their small cell structure on the light pole. They would have to replace the light pole in order to handle that additional weight. And it's been conveyed to me that they are okay with that, and they are pursuing that for that particular location. And then the town would need to have some kind of, you know, lease agreement with the applicant for that, and that's what that was talking about in regards to my discussions with the town attorney. And finally, the letter of credit would be required for the project of $5,000 to make sure that any areas that are disturbed, if there are any, they're restored to their pre-disturbed condition. So that's kind of an overview of what's being requested here and the staff's recommendation on those things. We do have a number of people that have signed up to speak on this item. I don't know if you all have any questions. I'm not sure if Mr. Youngblood is here, the applicant. Okay. Well, he certainly knew about it, so I've sent two or three emails about it.
I have a question on the Heron Road.
Yes, sir.
The first question is, there's a pole, utility, existing utility pole right adjacent to where they're proposing the new pole.
Yes, sir.
And is, is there some reason that we shouldn't ask that they can mount that antenna on top of that existing pole?
I did. They can't do it for clearance reasons, which that is valid, that, I mean, that's a valid issue.
And the other, your request to move it to the end of the road?
Yes.
Have you got any response to that request?
No.
No response, and applicant's not here?
This is something that you all do need to take action on, one way or the other. I mean, you do need to vote it up or down, or vote it with conditions, however you want to handle that, but we don't need to postpone it, we do need to take action on it.
The proposed pole is, is right next to that pole, and both of those poles would be right in that residence front yard.
Yep.
So I'm symp, I'm sympathetic to having it moved down toward the end of the street.
Yeah. Yep, and that's, again, that's the staff's recommendation, actually, is to move it to Parkside Drive. If, if for some reason that is not feasible, then at least move it further away from the Martin's driveway, in this case, to the end of the road, where it's more hidden.
I thought I heard you say that you had requested the Parkside Drive, but the, the response was that was not possible.
Yep.
Did I misunderstand you?
Yeah, they didn't elaborate on that, but that was the response.
Seems like there should be some justification for that, other than no?
Yes. That's what I was hoping they, they could speak to tonight, so.
Well, can we make changes in their proposed plan tonight, with them not being here? Like moving the cell tower to the pole further down of Heron Road?
You can make recommendations like that, that would, that would be consistent with, with state law, because you're not prohibiting it, you're just making a recommendation. I think certainly recommending to move it to the end of Heron Road, and it, you know, would seem to me be, be fine.
Well, we could make a recommendation that says, proven like the Parkside location, unless they provide sufficient justification to you and the technical staff.
Absolutely.
And if that's not, if you're pleased with that, then fall back to that, could be at Heron Road at the end of the road.
Yes.
Period.
You could do that, yes.
Or denial, right?
I mean, yeah, I'm just saying, if you wanted to take some action, but let's hear, I'd rather hear the rest of the comments before we, we have other things.
I'm disappointed that they're not here, because I think there's people here that want to speak, and I think the applicant should be here to hear that.
I'm a little bit surprised, because I did send the comments to the applicant.
I'm of the opinion that we table, get the applicant in here to listen to the comments.
I don't think we, we don't want to table it, I think we're under a deadline where we need to take action on it.
Yes.
Mark, would you elaborate a little bit more? You're using the word recommend, and to me, that sounds a little dangerous. Can we require? Because that's typically what this body does when it comes to details like this, and site plans and preliminary plats, we, we have requirements pursuant to our municipal code. I get concerned if we're just going to make a recommendation and the applicant says, well, we're not going to comply with your recommendation, we're going to do it the way we want to do it, do we still have a leg to stand on?
I'm trying to read through these again.
We'd have to specifically say what we're approving, and either meet it or it doesn't meet it. I'm with you on this recommendation.
Yeah, I've, I've never heard us, I mean, we've made recommendations regarding zoning, and we recommend that up to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, but I've never heard us use the word recommend like this in a situation like this.
I mean, all of their, all of my comments are always staff recommends, subject to...
But that's your recommendation to us.
Right.
Yeah.
But ultimately, is this body requiring or recommending?
We're approving or disapproving.
Well, within what you can require, you could certainly do that. And I think as long as you don't overstep the line, and you're, you know, I think these, these conditions that the staff noted are all conditions that, that would be consistent with certainly our provisions and my reading of the state law. So, I mean, we're not prohibiting it, I think we're making reasonable comments that are logical to me. I mean, to me, I would think there'd be more need for the pole to be on Parkside, both structures to be on Parkside Drive, as opposed to one on Heron. It would seem to me that there'd be more activity over on Parkside Drive, but I don't know. Again, I think you could, you could certainly place in your, in your action that it's on the applicant to demonstrate why the pole cannot be placed on Parkside Drive, and I think that's reasonable.
Is there already underground on Parkside for this particular applicant?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
So there's no, none on either?
No, well, like I mentioned earlier, the fiber, the, what I was told by the applicant in an email was that they don't usually place an order for fiber unless they know the location for the small cell structures is, is going to be approved.
I need some help understanding why we have to take action on this tonight.
We got a time constraint.
There's a time limitation under state law.
Yeah.
If we don't take action, then it's automatically approved.
As presented, yeah. Yeah, so we have to be careful, similar to subdivision plat, if someone hasn't signed a waiver for that, that we have to take action, one way or the other.
And who, who is the applicant that's not here?
That was MazTech AT&amp;T Mobility.
Is MazTech not your parent company, folks?
I think that's a different entity, yeah.
Mark, who actually owned the tower?
I thought I heard you say MazTech.
AT&amp;T, to my knowledge, is, would be the one.
There they were.
I would be happy to comment. Micah with MCI Verizon. So MazTech is our prime contractor. MazTech does, just like Verizon, we have Verizon Wireless, and MazTech is the same way. So their wireless division does work for Verizon, AT&amp;T, and all those different companies, but, but they're our contractor, completely.
Okay, thank you. Help, help me out here, who didn't show up, AT&amp;T or MazTech?
Well, the applicant was Maz...
Probably their engineer who drew the plan is normally the one that would be here to present this and answer questions.
Kevin Youngblood is, Kevin Youngblood is the gentleman I've been emailing and communicating with throughout the process. Yeah, and he's with MazTech.
He's MazTech, he said?
Mm-hmm. And he had all the, the staff's subject twos ahead of time, just like they did.
Did you have any reason to believe that he would not be here? Did you have any reason to believe he would be here?
Well, other than, other than, you know...
Well, I'm just wondering if there's some legitimate reason why, you know, I mean, there can be excusable reasons why.
Do you know where he's located?
I think they're out of Murfreesboro, I believe.
Well, my thoughts, we've got a lot of folks that are here tonight that have some thoughts they'd like to share. Let's, let's hear, hear what our citizens have to say, and maybe it'll help guide us in some decision-making.
And we can pass these comments along to him as well, is that right?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Just keep in mind, you know, there's certain limitations to what we can do. I, I think what the staff's recommending is, are reasonable suggestions, and they can be in the form of a requirement until someone can prove otherwise, I would suspect. I don't think that's a problem. But if they do present evidence that they need a pole in the Heron Road location, then it is something that would have to be approved. Now, we can hope that they'll, you know, put it at the very end of the road, as we suggest, and I'm...
Does that come back to us?
It depends, I...
I don't know how we would word it, we could defer to the staff to...
I'm not sure.
Depending on how we worded it.
Yeah, I think it really depends on how you act on it, yeah.
But regardless, we're working under a timing deadline.
Right, so we need the input from the citizens.
I think if they don't adhere to the recommendation, then I would recommend that it come back to you all.
I think it's important to point out, and Mark touched on it briefly, but just to put it in real layman's terms, both legislation, recent legislation out of Nashville and Washington DC have somewhat tied our hands in what we can and cannot approve when it comes to, to cell towers and small cell structures and so forth, because they have now been designated basically as much authority as what a utility or other municipalities have. So I think, as we're working through this, and I kind of keep that in the back of your mind, there's, in a perfect world, we could just say, no, you can't do this, but I don't think that, especially with some of the recent legislation, which both out of DC and Nashville, we do not have the authority to be able to just absolutely say no.
Right, yeah. All right, I agree, that's true.
And, Mark, go tell a little bit about the timing of it, too. If we don't do anything, there's a deadline?
Yeah, well, you, you'll have to act, I mean, you all have to act tonight, you need to vote it up or down.
Suppose in the worst-case scenario, we denied it tonight, then do they have the...
Have to have reasons for denial, and then...
For him not being here is not a reason.
Legitimate reasons?
Well, yeah. Yeah, logical reasons for denial, and, and then, you know, we'll, we'll get back with the applicant and...
They could reapply?
Yeah, they can always come back and present whatever necessary evidence that they need to present for their case.
Okay.
Like I said, I'm kind of surprised that no one's here, because they certainly knew that there were some concerns and recommendations that involved the placement of at least one of these structures.
Do you happen to know offhand how long the, your recommendations have been in their hands?
There's been several emails about different recommendations. I mean, I sent the staff recommendations two days ago for tonight's meeting. But I've also emailed the applicant a couple of times prior to that, you know, and they know about this.
Well, it's the Heron Road, Parkside Drive issue that's obviously of more concern here, it seems.
Yep.
So that's, I just wonder how long they've had to consider that recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, we talked about it at the staff developer meeting, actually.
Meeting, okay.
Yeah, when they didn't have one, anyone for that either.
It's not just been sprung on them, right?
That was, that was also noted to them that we would be talking about that request at the staff developer meeting.
Okay.
And that was over two weeks ago, so...
All right, that's Simmons Lockham for time.
Did our clock for action start on the, May the 23rd, when you received the packet, or the date they sent it supposedly, or dated it? Your receipt, I hope.
Original application, whatever the original application was, it's kind of when the clocks...
May the 23rd was what was your receipt date?
Yeah, when it's submitted and deemed to be complete, then, you know, that's when the clock starts.
Does it extend after, if, depending on what we, if we were denied, does that, at that point, does it start over again? What's the timing on that?
I'd have to look at the state law on that, because it actually is a little different than the town's. But there is a, there is a clock that starts over, and, but it, I'm not sure exactly what that time frame is.
Come out for the appeals process, is that kind of what you're referring to?
No, just for resubmital and reapproval, I guess, or...
Yeah, I can't remember what that, what, how many days that one is.
Yeah.
Can we hear some of the comments?
Yeah, yeah, let me, I'll try to check on that while you're, while we're listening here. The first person, I think, is Patrick Hayes.
Patrick Hayes.
Is that right? I couldn't hardly read that. And after Patrick is Laura Fang, Fangman, Fangnan?
My concerns are with the health of a residential community, just, just going online to the internet, or do you have my address?
We would like your name and address, yes, sir.
Oh, Patrick Edward Hayes, it's 11317 Gates Mill Drive.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
And also, Mark, can you start the timer?
Right down the street from where the proposed Heron Road tower would be, yeah.
Thank you.
You can go online and find tens of studies that basically talk about the deleterious effects, the bad effects of radiation, even low-level electromagnetic radiation. One of them from the American Academy of Pediatrics, and then many international ones. We don't take, seem to take it as seriously here as Europe has taken it, because they've done a lot more research. But if, when I look at their studies, and there's lots of them, it, it's apparent that they've found deleterious and bad things happening to people within 500 meters of that low-level radiation from towers. And so my thought is, if there's any way you can get this to be moved as far away from a residential community as you can, that would be a good thing. And I mean, these are well-documented, anybody can go out on the internet and find it, and I'm hearing a lot about, from, from you folks, or not from you, but from the gentleman at the end there, that you have to do this, you're mandated to do this, and you have no choices. But I would say, if you have a choice, as far as the, the health issue is concerned, I would, I would try to move it as far away from a residential community as you can get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And the next speaker is Laura Fangman?
I can't, sorry, mispronounced that.
Hi, good evening.
Please, please pull the mic down where you can.
Laura, if you could give us your first and last name and your address.
Laura Fangman, 11342 Gates Mill. And I apologize, I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, I was just making some notes... this evening. I was just making some notes, kind of as things went along. Obviously, I'm in the neighborhood that's impacted by this. I'm not real interested in having another tower as part of the neighborhood. I feel like it's a slippery slope. There's already a power pole there. There's a lot going on. There's a small utility box. Now we're going to add another cell tower. I think that it's very difficult to not imagine that in the future, another company wants to add something else, well, let's just add it right there, because we've already got this other stuff. We'll put it by the other poles. That is most certainly going to impact property values, not just for the front yard that it falls into. Nobody wants to drive past that. So I think that future permits like this should be considered when we talk about putting them in that space right there. It, he mentioned a $5,000 letter of credit, which I assume is, if they don't fix things, you keep their money and pay to have it fixed. $5,000 is grossly insufficient, based on what I understand will have to happen. And once this is approved, then they're going to permit for, it sounds like fiber, which is now going to tear up more and impact more people's property to get that second piece done, once we get the first piece approved. So I think that there's some future ramifications as well. And I also think that not showing up tonight's pretty indicative of how you could expect that process to go. I think you could probably expect that he's not going to do what he says he's going to do. And I think that the company would be more than happy to walk away from $5,000. It's a cost of doing business. So I don't think that they're particularly concerned about the residents or who that might impact. I think, oh, I think my neighbor probably can speak a little bit more to it, but if you're looking for a legitimate reason to deny the permit, the very basic understanding I have of the process is that it requires four pictures, and I see one. So that would be an incomplete application, if, in fact, that is correct, if my understanding of that's correct. So someone else can probably speak more to that than I can, but I did want to throw it out there. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fangman, F-E-N-G, Fangman, that's an F.
Anybody else that, we just-
Hold on a second, trying to get that. Joe Martin?
Is there someone after that that can be?
Melissa Martin.
Good evening. Joe Martin, 631 Heron Road. My wife, Melissa Martin, is going to join us. I first would point out that the address is probably incomplete, or the application's incomplete, because the address is wrong. There's no 633 Heron Road. We're on 631, and we're at the very end. We even checked with the post office, even though I knew the answer. So actually, that's incorrect. Maybe go ahead and speak, this was one of my speaking points, or maybe go ahead and point out a little bit. So in the application process, it does say that there has to be four different angles. Section 13, the Farragut own application process for small cell structures, says the photographs should view a shed of each proposed small cell support structure location, taken in at least four directions. So as we're pointing out, we're actually not looking at two pictures. We're looking at one picture, which, I kind of remind everybody, a picture's worth a thousand words, right? So if you kind of slant your pictures, you kind of slant your angle of what you're trying to achieve. So they superimposed the pole onto the second one, but obviously, all you see is the one picture. My wife has some additional pictures. Mark, I think you have the ability to take pictures and project them on the screen, if I remember correctly.
I don't know why that's-
Or we can pass them around.
Yeah, you'll have to pass them around.
Okay. So we have additional pictures to show how this impacts us, and my friends here in Sweetbrier that also showed up, because quite honestly, it's in my front yard. So obviously, it's the aesthetics concern from my standpoint of looking at this from my front porch, from my driveway, and my neighbors in Sweetbrier, who has to stop and look at that every day as they, they travel, at that stop sign, to travel towards, on Heron Road. Of course, there's already mentioned the property value. I have concern, again, adding something else that's going to impact our property value. The health concerns, I actually did the same thing myself, read a little bit. I know conspiracy theory on internet, don't believe everything you read, but there is a lot of the good document studies that have been conducted. If you get bored, go read about the one in a school in California that had the same problem, with four children developing cancer, because they allowed a cell structure on the school property. I would point out that the fact that we also have lived this three other times in interruption of our property, flashback to when JCPenney's was built, they cut my driveway to put a sewer pipe in. The second time, we had a buried box for telecommunications. We had a new pole, that's actually been replaced about two years ago. That was a wooden pole there originally. And every time, I was told that would be replaced back to its current state. I'm a pretty particular homeowner, i.e. yard guy, and every time that that was done, I'm the one that actually had to go in to do the final grade and correction, because it was never done satisfactory, and I fixed it. So I have concerns on that. You know, I guess, from my perspective, and going back and reading, and I think, Mark, this was the communication that you had back and forth with Mr. Youngblood, but you even mentioned this isn't a residential area. So I would also bring up the fact that, why would we allow this in a residential area? Parkside's a perfect opportunity, perfect place for it, and even if we do a secondary placement, which I did think of, which was pointed out by Mark, the second power pole that's closer to JCPenney's proximity, but you still have the aesthetics issue, you still have the health concern issues, you still have everything else. At least it's not in my front yard. I guess instead of Denby, it's NIPF, if anybody knows the acronym, not in my front yard. So with that, I'll turn it over to my wife, and let her talk a little bit about it as well.
Hey there. I'm Melissa Martin, 631 Heron Road, here in the big town of Farragut. I've got some photos. I would kind of just like to, I made two sets, so y'all can start on either end, and if you don't mind, we can go through them and kind of look at them together.
Sure.
And I kind of put on the back what it was, but this first photo is actually me standing on my front porch, and I can see that power pole-
We need you to tap on the microphone, please.
I can see the head.
I'm sorry.
Well, maybe you can show it to me from this one. In the first one, I'm standing on my, on my porch, looking at that pole. So to be looking at another big cell tower isn't something I would exactly like to sit there and do. We plan, you know, we've been here a long time, and my grandmother actually graduated from Farragut High School. So we have been long-term Farragutians, and have no intention of moving at all. But if we did sometime, I'm sure this would severely impact our ability to sell our home, because it's, it's so not nice-looking. The second photo, I think you have right there, is me actually standing where that power pole is, looking at my porch. So it is very close to my home where this tower would be, and the health concerns, I can't afford to get sick from a radiation tower. Okay, the next one, again, that's on from a little bit on up my driveway, just a pinch, so that would be looking at the tower again. Okay, this is standing at my driveway. Where on the very right, you can see that tower, and it's kind of a shot angled, like you're going to be looking down to where the other pole is, towards the JCPenney's. And right now, in the summer, it does look like there's a lot of vegetation there. But when the fall comes, and the trees lose their leaves, it will still be an eyesore, because it's not that far away. And right there, where that intersection is, the majority of Sweetbrier traffic comes up Heron Road and turns right on Gates Mill. So it's going to be right there. It's still in a big viewing area for all of us. Okay, let's see. That is actually the second pole that Mark had shown the slide of, that's up near the wall, where they are, the town is making their recommendation to put, to put the cellphone tower. Okay, so there is a greenway. If you go to the end of Heron Road, there's some boulders, and you can walk up right behind the big, pretty wall at JCPenney's. There is a gigantic holding pond, right there. There is a lot of nice, level ground by that holding pond. That would be a great place, in my opinion, to put this tower. If you guys are familiar where the TVA Credit Union is, if you were to walk back about 20 yards, there is a huge holding pond there. There's a nice wooden fence up there that was put in. All that space there, that is not a residential area. That has got JCPenney's right there, it's got the Credit Union right there, and Panda Express, and Tennessee State Bank is all right in that area. That is a shot of the greenway trail going down, just to show that going up, where you can't see a lot of residential area, to go to where that holding pond is. That is another area. If you're going up the greenway, you can see a fence there on the right, and that's to kind of give the neighborhood a little bit of privacy from all the commercial development on Parkside. So if you were to go on the side of Parkside, on the other side of the fence there, again is a good area, the next shot is a picture of, of that fence. The next shot is there right at the edge of the holding pond, looking at the Tennessee State Bank. And that is another shot up there. There's a vast amount of property up on the top there. It would not be right alongside Parkside Road, as to be an eyesore there, but it would give a little bit of space to where it could maybe sit back just a little bit, but not impinge on a neighborhood and, and folks living there. Like my husband did say, the application and also the site map, it had 633 Heron Road on it, which is not a valid address with the United States Postal Service. That land is our land, and it doesn't go any further on that road than 631. And I'm not really sure, had it not been for one of our neighbors, we actually had no idea that this was being proposed in our front yard. We didn't see it anywhere in the Farragut Press Enterprise. It was for one of our neighbors that came to the town hall for another matter, that she got a hold of this map. So I guess I'm kind of concerned. If, if, you know, my neighbor wasn't home, I wouldn't have known about any of this going on tonight, and it could have been approved to be right in my yard. So I would ask this planning commission, if something like that is directly in somebody's yard, you know, should that resident not be notified prior to something already being approved? I didn't think to check the Farragut website every day, you know, I don't know if that's what we need to do, but I would just, you know, really ask you all to please consider not putting this in our front yard, and to move it to, to Parkside. I mean, we, we've had a lot of things happen. In my great-grandmother's house is where the old Gander Mountain was. So when we moved there, that was just a family street. My papa and all his sisters lived on that street, and it was a really sweet street. And it's nothing like that now, and I know that changes happen. But I would just ask you all, please don't make this change in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all, Mark?
No, we still got Melissa, oh, no, sorry, I just didn't put that up. Dawn and Elaine Jackson?
Do we have anyone after them?
Yeah, I've got three more, I believe, yeah.
The next one person, if you have them-
The next one after that is John Hoffman.
If John, if you'll come in the back over there and be ready to go next.
Hi there. My name is Elaine Jackson, and my husband and I live at 11636 Gates Mill Drive. We're literally right across the street from the Martins, and I have to agree with them, we had no idea that this was even being proposed. There was no letters that came out to maybe notify us that there was a possibility. The way I found out, is I was backing out of my driveway last week, and Joe was putting up his protest sign and notifying everybody that there was a meeting tonight. We didn't even know about the meeting. So I'm very disappointed, because we've lived in Farragut for 35 years, and we dealt with David Rogers when you all first started planning Parkside Drive. And we honestly thought about moving away, but I want to thank you for taking away that entrance into Heron Road, and not making it a through street from Parkside Drive. That has saved our neighborhood from having all that crazy traffic. But going back to what we're dealing with tonight, I don't want a tacky pole in front of their home and across the street from mine. And I'll have to say that I did not do the research that this other gentleman did, but I appreciate that, because the radiation and the waves from this tower will be detrimental to our health. And my husband is already disabled, and I don't need further disablement. It's okay, but it's bad enough. And I don't want to move. I've been there 35 years. I have a beautiful home. We have a cute little fox that apparently loves our front porch, and is showing up on our Ring app. And I don't want any more damage done to our neighborhood. They tore up my yard about four years ago, and like Joe said, they don't come back and fix it the way it was. They sprinkle a little grass seed, and they throw a little pine straw on it and go, "I hope your yard looks good." So now, we have people that have to come and protect it, or take care of it for us. But I just beg you, like they are, don't put this ugly thing across the street from us. We don't need it. She, Melissa pointed out, there's plenty of places to put this thing. Parkside Drive is a business. Put it on business. Let residential stay residential. We have the sweetest little neighborhood and the best neighbors ever. Keep it that way for us, please.
Thank you.
And John Hoffman. And after John is Miranda Heath.
My name is John Hoffman, 11341 Gates Mill Drive. I've been coming to these meetings for just about 32 years, and I must say, this is the first time in all of those meetings where the applicant didn't have the courtesy to come or to provide an explanation for why he couldn't, he or she couldn't be here. I think there's a message in that, and I hope that you will listen to it loud and clear. The message is, why do we have any reason to believe what they say, or that they will do what they say they will do? They haven't told us why this technical device needs to be where they want to put it. They just said they want to put it there. They haven't told us why it's safe. They haven't addressed safety one way or another. I'm going to assume it's safe, but they haven't addressed it at all. As several of the other speakers have pointed out, including the town staff, there are numerous alternative locations, and they haven't given us any reason why those aren't equally appropriate to the one that they have proposed. So specifically, I would like to ask that you, given that you have to take a vote tonight, that you, first of all, reflect your disappointment that they haven't shown up to address any concerns from anyone, that if we're mandated by state law to approve something, approve placing it out along Parkside Drive in any of the numerous locations that have been pointed out that would be far more suitable. We have no reason to believe those are technically insufficient solutions. So approve that, and let them come back to us to consider alternatives if and when that might be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miranda Heath. And after her, Ken Chipley.
Thank you. Miranda Heath, address 11349 Gates Mill Drive. So I do work in healthcare, and so I would like to, just to kind of touch on the radiation, if you are concerned that radiation is safe, please look up Marie Curie, and also look at our disabled Y-12 workers and those from Bull Run and BWXT, and ask them how safe radiation is, and ask them if they would want to live next to a cellphone tower after the damage it did when they worked in it. Also, I don't understand how it would be something that would be outside of the realm of your all's capabilities and possibilities for saying that, "We're not going to put this here on Heron, because there are signage height restrictions for businesses. There are parking requirements. There are green space requirements inside of every public space. You must have so much green space." And Parkside Drive, if these cellphone folks are so concerned about their cellphone tower, all of the cellphone stores are on Parkside Drive. Wouldn't it be lovely for them to look out their windows and say, "There is our beautiful cell tower?" So I would encourage you guys, I know I said that a little tongue-in-cheek, and I hope that no one took that as disrespectful, but this is really something that would be a detriment to our neighborhood, a detriment to our health, and there are other placements for it. There is no reason that I could see why if something were to be put on Parkside Drive, there are plenty of places, as these fine folks pointed out, no one would even see it. If you put it behind JCPenney's, nobody's going to see it. If you put it behind Publix, nobody's going to see it. If you put it on Heron Road, every- If you put it on Heron Road, everyone here will see it every day, every time we come home, every time we leave to go to work. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Carol Christopherson.
I'm last. Real quick, Carol Christopherson, 11320 Gates Mill Drive, and it's, I think it's good to see all of you again. I have one real quick comment. I find it absolutely reprehensible that this gentleman didn't even bother to come, and I find a whiff of arrogance and indifference in the spokesperson not showing up, and if I were you all, I would be pretty insulted. The other thing is that it was just plain dumb luck that a nerdy homeowner looks at the agenda for the planning commission and the alderman, and I am not calling this person a name, it's me, and happened to see the agenda item. And I have kept up for years with what's going on with these cell towers, having come from New Jersey, where they tried to ram a cell tower down the throat of the watershed in New Jersey. So I know about cell towers, and I also, this is a pole. It's not a tower, it's a pole. I don't like the way they have treated the town and the homeowners, treating us as if we have no right in the say. No one came knocking on our door to tell us that they were putting in this application for a pole. And I would like to see more communication with my beautiful neighborhood, and these are all my immediate neighbors, and I'm telling you, every one of them are fabulous people. And we don't want a cell tower in a place that it doesn't have to be when there are other places it can go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, as I mentioned in the packet overview of this item, if the application was deemed to be incomplete, which at this point, I would recommend that it is incomplete, that it be denied, that would be what I would recommend at the staff level. The applicant certainly has the ability to come back and present us with the requested information that would help us to make a reasonable assessment of where this pole could be located. But I think in the absence of that information, the application would seem to me to be incomplete and should be denied.
What does that do to the timetable?
Yeah, I was reading through that. I'm going to have to read through all that, because the state law is so poorly written, frankly, on that, it's confusing. But, you know, certainly you can recommend denial for something that's incomplete, and then if they don't submit the supplemental information within 30 days, then the application itself can be completely denied, and they would have to start over. So I think this gives them an opportunity to provide us with the requested information, because I think it's reasonable information. Like I mentioned earlier, I don't think what we're requesting is inconsistent with the state law. We're not saying you can't place it in our community. All we're doing is saying, we need good information as to, you know, why you need the structure and the location you're proposing. And if they can provide that, that's perfectly acceptable. But I think at this point, it would be incomplete application.
I think, to start off with, it is incomplete. I mean, we know 5G is on the way, and it's going to require these things. We've already got them on Parkside Drive. The other applicants were smart enough to give us complete applications, and we have them on Parkside Drive. This is a, kind of an unusual request, to say the least, and it's incomplete, so I think we need a motion.
Mark, do we have to make a motion for approval and then vote nay, or do we, can we make a negative motion?
I'm always a little unclear about that.
No, it's come up before, and I don't want to go down that road again.
I don't know if David has a, you can make a negative motion, yes.
Thank you.
I'm looking at item, wait, just a second. I have one more comment. I'm looking at item number 11, jumping ahead a bit.
Yes.
And I think this falls very directly into that category of just how many comments are needed before an item is, an application is incomplete. Here we've got 11 comments, and one very significant, number nine, and then one of, a couple of applicants noted that the address is not even correct. I think we've got more than sufficient reason to make a motion to deny this on incompletion.
Is that a motion?
I make such a motion.
Get that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
If I receive supplemental information, I will notify the, as many people as I can. Certainly, if I notify Carol, I'm sure she can take care of it. So I'll notify her, and she can, it's not a requirement to notify on a matter like this, that, I'm not saying that's right. It's not like a rezoning. And frankly, we didn't get this location until just very recently ourselves at the staff level. It kind of caught me off guard. I was surprised that someone was requesting a structure in this area since it is residential. And again, as I mentioned earlier, it would seem to me, the pole would be better suited in an area where there's more cell phone activity on Parkside Drive. But again, you know, we don't have enough information at this point to make that kind of assessment, so I think that's why, one big reason why this is inadequate at this point.
Mark, is, do you have the information to give, like Carol and anybody else who wants to look up the state requirements?
I can get that to them.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good reading.
And then there's federal on top of that, so.
Yeah, yeah, but again, you know, we are constrained within, we can't do anything that exceeds what the state allows us to do. And so, like the directional request that someone had mentioned, that's, we can't really do that, even though our ordinance says that the state law supersedes that, and there's certain things that we're limited on. So when we review an application, we have to not only compare it to our provisions, we also have to make sure that it's not inconsistent with the state provisions.
Zayo was capable of giving us that, and I think this applicant should as well.
Yeah, well, the state law's changed since Zayo, as well. So, you know, we've become a little more constrained with what we can do as a result of some of the changes that have occurred at the state level.
Go ahead, Carol.
Yes, Sweetbrier, can you hear me? Sweetbrier is not a bunch of nimby's. We are not nimby's. Every one of us are grateful for our cell phones every day, and we want good cell service. That is not the issue. So just make sure that nobody puts words in our mouths that we're a bunch of nimby's who came in saying, "Not in my backyard." We want this done right. It does not have to be there, as far as we're concerned, that there are other places. So I just want to make sure that that doesn't get out.
Thank you all for coming.
Let me make one general comment. I think this is just kind of the first instance it's really come up. As technology's evolved, we're, the technology's moving to, we're going to probably see a lot more of these smaller tower-type structures, I mean, like even the height of a street sign in our neighborhoods. And so we're going to have to learn how to accommodate that, because we, as a municipality, can't just say no. So how, so this is the first kind of, time we're running into this. So generic comment for all of us is, as we want more technology, it's going to drive it, because you're going to have smaller ranges and higher power, and it's going to be, you know, more prolific, because you're going to need more of these small, very small structures to accommodate that.
And one thing we've already approved is that, am I right, still right with the fact that any new neighborhoods we're approving now, they have to have some kind of idea about where they will put these structures within these new neighborhoods?
Well, we've mentioned that with some subdivision requests that have come through, and in fact, I think that's been a subject too with you all on some of these, for them to think about it, but it's, you know, it's such an evolving technology, I don't, you know, who knows? It may be poles this tall in 10 years, it may not, I don't know, you know, it's.
We just know something's coming.
Yeah, there's probably going to be a need for more structures, but I'm not sure what that's going to look like. It would be wise to try to provide an additional conduit as, when you're putting in a development, and I think some of our developers do that.
I think we discussed the fact that at least if you know, if you're developing a new subdivision and you're buying into a new subdivision, and you know that these things are going to be there where it is, that's helpful.
It's hard, it's hard to regulate that, because you don't really know what the future holds. The 5G is really only just started, and that's kind of an experimental stage, really, mostly on the west coast in large cities. But we, so we really, by the time it gets to smaller areas like ours, it could be very different than what it is right now.
Mark, it seems to me that we need some education, I guess, because in my research for this topic, I found that technically, the towers can handle more than one carrier, and I don't know what their position is on that. But for us, that would be nice to have one tower instead of four towers. So it seems to me that we really need to investigate this a little bit, and as you said, it's going to get worse before it gets better, because as 5G comes in, then there's going to be a lot more towers, because the distance is so much shorter with 5G. So it sounds like we need a little education process here for us here in the commission if we're to make reasonable decisions on this issue as it comes up.
Ran into that on Parkside Drive, if you remember, some time ago, and the answer that I got at that time as to whether they could share or not was that they don't really communicate too well, and they don't act like they want to share, but maybe.
We have requirement for the larger towers.
They can, for example, in large arenas where they put in the same kind of technology, they all share the same hardware.
They can, they can, but they don't always want to do that.
So my position is, do we, as the town, have any voice on whether we can force that to happen or not? That would be good to know, and I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, well, I could certainly.
We're not saying no, okay? We're just saying, how about doing it this way?
Yeah, and that's one where we're a little bit constrained by the state legislation, but, you know, it's something that, could we require that? My reading of the state provisions is no. Could we suggest it and recommend it? Certainly. And if they can work it out, that's fine. But I don't think we could actually require it, at least as the way I read.
My example.
We have been fairly successful on the large towers of doing that, getting the.
Yeah, large towers are a little different. We're talking about these small cell support structures.
My example and point is, the location of placing a tower in Parkside is about 100 yards away from a Verizon tower that looks just like it. So now we've got two antenna towers within 100 yards of each other.
Mrs. Martin, did you have something you wanted to add?
I did. I just want to make sure I'm totally clear. So I know this was denied for now, but the applicant has 30 days to make a new application. So is our site still subject to going through this again if he applies again for it to be at our same site?
It could be.
Absolutely, yes.
It could be.
Okay, so how will we know? Like, how will we know if that's happened?
Like I said, if I get, I can, you know, if you can get, is your email on here? Could you email me?
Oh, I will. I'll blow it.
That's fine. Yeah, and you and Carol, I think she might have already left. No, she's back there.
Okay, so we, like, I guess we as, or y'all, couldn't say absolutely not to this residential area, but if you want to put it somewhere on Parkside, I mean, that would have to come with the next application, because it's dead for now.
They would have to show us the burden of proof to, for us to, for us to really be able to determine where they want the tower. And they may have evidence that says, for whatever reason, and we'll take the evidence and have it vetted by the town attorney, that says it has to be in your front yard. And they're, I'm not saying that's going to happen, I'm saying it could happen. So it is important to be, to stay abreast of what's happening with this, as this may pan out over a couple of months. Like Mark was saying, we are kind of in uncharted territory when it comes to these small cell structures, and I suspect in the next few years, there'll be some case law that kind of supports different municipalities, because all municipalities are struggling with this, especially when it starts getting into residential areas. And we've been, we kind of knew this was coming a couple of years ago. We started training on it, trying to understand, because at first, we didn't even know what they were. What are these little funny-looking little poles? And now we're trying to figure out exactly what we can and can't do. So I guess what we're going to ask of the applicant is you need to prove to us why you can't go to Parkside Drive. And if they have some scientific reason that says they have to be in front of your house, I mean, you're going to want to be involved in that process, and that's when it gets real challenging, because we may not have the ability to tell them no if they have. And see, the problem is, we're not sure exactly what that proof is. Who determines whether the proof, this scientific reason is even valid? Well, we're not sure.
Well, in some of my research I was doing too, about the easement, you know, it's essential operations. It's your power, it's your water that would go into easement. A cell phone is not truly an essential to life, you know what I'm saying, to be in easement.
That's, unfortunately, that's what's actually recently changed with the state of Tennessee. Our state legislatures are now calling that essential. I mean, just like electricity wasn't essential 100 years ago, then it became essential, and then now, all of a sudden, our legislatures in, laytours in Nashville are saying, okay, we're going to let cell phone companies fall under the same umbrella as a gas company, electric company, water company, and your sewer company. And that's why we're in uncharted territory.
So it's up to them to come back to you all to apply again? Like, you don't reach back out to them and say, whatever, they come to the town?
But to them, the action taken tonight, obviously, and so, because I have to, under state law, and I would anyway, but I'll convey that to them, and it's, you know, they have the opportunity to come and submit the information that the staff requested before this meeting for them to.
Mark, would, have they already missed the deadline to get back on the agenda for July, or the earliest agenda they would be on would be August?
Well, if they resubmit something, I will bring it back to.
In July, so it could be the third Thursday in July.
Yep.
Again, we'll know in a few weeks, Mark will put out the agenda, and that can, you know, there is public notification, but it's in the fine print. I mean, it's hard, I mean, if you don't know exactly what you're looking for, it's easy to miss, and I understand that.
Okay, thank you.
Is it additional information under the same application, or is it a new application they have?
It's just supplemental information to the existing.
I just wanted to clarify that for everybody.
Yes, that's what it is. Now, the motion was made by Kyle and seconded by St. Clair, and was there a motion for all approval?
On the seconded.
I missed that, okay.
Could you, Mark, repeat the complete resolution that you have for?
The motion?
The motion for discussion. I just.
Well, it was just.
Motion was to be denied because of incompleteness.
Actual wording of it, I hope it's because of the incomplete application.
Yeah, it was incomplete, especially in regards to, you know, information to help the commission determine the reasonable location for the Heron Road structure in this case. So, and, you know, and then.
And the apparent.
The address number apparently was wrong, which, it's in the public right of ways, it technically doesn't have an address, but it, you know, it's supposed to pull to the closest address, which apparently was incorrect, so. But there was a 633 that did show up on KGIS, so.
Mrs. Martin, would you like your photographs back, so you don't have to sit through the next agenda items and wait? Unless you're really bored, you just really enjoy it. the next agenda items and wait, unless you're really bored, you're just really enjoying this?
Well, let's see, the man's or watch a dance, Mom.
Thank you for bringing us in.
Thank you for coming.
There's another one, Mark.
And all, all approved that, right? Everyone voted in the affirmative?
Yes.
Of that? Okay.
We all approved the denial.
Denial.
Would like to have it read, okay?
Yes.
All these things are supposed to have been in, uh, current, current right-of-ways, so...
Thank you all very much.
So what's the...
Yeah, I appreciate it.
To justify something, you need to be, have a comparison, a why, or why it should be or why it shouldn't be. We didn't have that.
Well...
We stayed our reason.
Yeah. Did they reasons? Yeah. I don't think you have to have a comparison. If it's incomplete, it's incomplete.
That's true, but coming back, if he's going to come back, and he says that...
Well, Mark, Mark elaborated, and as maker of the motion, I'd be happy to elaborate further if you'd like, on specifically item number nine, that we would like some explanation as to why the location of that tower must be in a residential area, period, rather than commercial. Is that enough comparison?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get that, Mark?
Yeah, yeah. Motion to amend.
Approve. I mean, second, excuse me. Okay. Let's, let's go over this again and give Mark the exact wording that you want. Mark, do you need...
Well, stated, stated again. So the motion was to deny.
Second motion, Ron, or you want to second the motion?
Well, I think, I think we need a motion to amend, if we're going to change the, the motion.
Okay. Who wants to amend that?
Well, Ron made the motion to amend, and I seconded it. I think I, I kind of put words in his mouth, I guess. That's why I asked if you wanted me to make the motion, but you go ahead, Ron, if you would like.
Well, no, go ahead. Just go ahead and complete it.
I'm going to make a, make a motion to amend the previous motion to specifically say that the application was incomplete because lack of sufficient information concerning the location of the tower that's proposed to be at Heron Road, which is a residential area, rather than on Parkside Drive or other feasible location that is not residential. In addition to the erroneous address and also the other multitude of items that had not been responded to. In other words, the incompleteness of the application.
Okay, I'll, I get that, most part.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second, yes.
All those in favor? Opposed? Is that good, David?
David, you're, you're frowning back there.
Right, I need to have all that tonight. David Smoke, Tenement Minister. As y'all have been talking through this issue the last few minutes, I've been reading the state law that has transpired over the last couple of years. I think your first motion that you had is the absolute proper motion to make at this time when it comes to incomplete application, because it was absolutely incomplete. It didn't have enough information in it. The issue of commercial residential zoning does not matter to the state law. It's in the right-of-way. And so the right-of-way is the only thing that really matters according to state law. So I think your original motion of denial, based on the fact that it was incomplete, is absolutely something that is accurate and can go forward on. We will wait on the applicant. Mark does have to tell the applicant why the basis of the denial was. And that applicant then has whatever time period they want to respond. But once they respond, then we have so many days before it has to come back to this body to then take it up as part of that, part of that issue. So I think it's important that you made that motion first, it was absolutely correct. I think we may want to just stick with that motion, if that's possible, from the planning commission. And then you probably will see this again down the road, based on the, hopefully, a better location for that Heron Road spot. But we'll have to wait and see what the applicant says.
So for the timing-wise, when they resubmit it, it starts again from that point?
So they already have an open application, let's say. So whenever they respond back to Mark, this body will have 30 days to make a determination of, of the validity of that application.
Okay, so we don't have to go back to the original date or anything?
So actually, it'd be July, then, when we have to act on it again?
Well, it depends on when they, when they resubmit some of the details.
It all depends on when they resubmit.
Hearing out of this is, Roseanne, you may want to amend your amended motion, or you may want to...
Make a motion to go back to the original motion, right?
Correct.
We need to straighten out the mess.
We need to clean this up.
Correct. I would, I would go back to your original motion.
I move we approve the original motion, but deny it based on the fact the application is incomplete.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Okay. Item number six, discussion and public hearing on a final plat for Easton Park, Unit 2, Turkey Creek Road, west of Briarstone Lane, 23 lots, 8.4 acres, zone R-3, HFTCGP applicant.
This is plating the remainder of Easton Park, across from Anchor Park. The western portion, there's two cul-de-sacs in this particular unit. They have 22 house lots and one open space lot that kind of goes around the periphery of the development. The remaining comments are mostly dealing with field and paperwork-related items. They're still working on some stabilization out there. And then the other items were dealing mostly with verifications and, you know, letters of credit and things like that. So the staff recommends approval of this plat, subject to the seven comments that are at your places.
Ryan Estabrooks with Site Incorporated, 10215 Technology Drive, Suite 304, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Are you in agreement with the subject twos here to, to clean those up?
Yes, and we have already actually resubmitted to the town revised plans and addressing some of these besides the, the site stabilization. Those obviously take a little bit of time.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Motion to approve the final plat for Easton Park, Unit 2, Turkey Creek West, Briarstone Lane, 23 lots, subject to items 1 through 7.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you for coming. We appreciate you sitting through it.
Thanks for coming.
Okay, moving on to item number nine, discussion on an amendment to the C-1 mixed-use town center portion of the Fergie's zoning ordinance, as applied, as applied to drive-throughs and menu boards on existing developments with drive-throughs that predate the mixed-use town center land use designation, McDonald's USA LLC applicant. This is for discussion purposes only tonight.
Y'all may remember, back actually in August of 2018, y'all had a site plan that came before you for some remodeling out of the existing McDonald's. And as part of that, they are redoing the, essentially, the exterior of the building and doing some site modifications as well. The site, as you all know, had been out there, is pretty packed full of stuff. Let me pull up the site here. There's not a lot of space on the site. It's a little over an acre. And so when the, when this was originally developed back in 1985, the, most of the customers would go inside. There was, the drive-through was probably less than 30% of the customer base. And now it's almost flipped the other, in the other direction for this particular restaurant. So most people, by, by far, are using the drive-through. So what they're proposing, what they would like to do, and they're requesting a text amendment for, is the ability to have two menu boards, essentially take the existing drive-through lane and, and kind of separate it into two, two areas there to relieve some of the stacking that the site has, so that people can, you know, get, get around the building a little bit more efficiently and sa, more safely, actually, than what you have right now. As part of this proposal, they're, be taking out some parking spaces where there could be a conflict with a car backing up to someone that's in the stack lane. So like, this is going to work. Must be audio. I don't know what's going on tonight here. Well, across from the drive-through lane, there used to be, there would be parking spaces that'll be taken out. And then they're also removing some parking spaces in the northeast corner, where that dashed area is. And that will help with the traffic flow in that area, as far as people entering and exiting the site, and minimizing conflicts with people that are in the stack area and utilizing the drive-through. This area is in the mixed-use town center portion of the C1 zoning district, so it does have specific requirements that govern the drive-throughs. However, obviously, this is an existing drive-through facility that's been there for a long time. It predates the mixed-use town center. And so, you know, at the staff level, we feel that operationally, what they're proposing makes a lot of sense. We think that it enhances the flow of traffic, given the, the kind of customer base that they have, and would be an improvement to the, to the development. But that's going to require some requested amendments to the, to that portion of the C1 zoning district. So one option that we put in your packet to consider would be in that drive-through section of the mixed-use town center, maybe add a section seven, that gives really y'all some, some flexibility to kind of evaluate these existing restaurant facilities that have drive-throughs on a more or less case-by-case basis. Some restaurants, like my understanding, the Taco Bell, a large portion of their customers go inside. But for some reason, on many of the McDonald's, they're more of a drive-through lane user. So, so again, this, this provision would give you all some flexibility to evaluate conditions, and then, you know, assess that in terms of the scope of the redevelopment. And, you know, if somebody's tearing down the, the building and starting over, then that's one thing, you know. But if they're essentially just making some renovations and some improvements to the site that would facilitate traffic flow, maybe improve safety as well, then that could be given consideration. And that, whatever, you know, is considered, would be the minimum adjustment necessary for this particular request. Now, one of the things that would be involved in this is the addition of more, get this working here, more signage. Currently, in the mixed-use town center area, menu board sign, you're allowed one, and it can be up to 36 square feet. So what they're requesting is, since they would have two essentially ordering points, is a menu board, pre-menu board, and kind of split that up into two different locations. So, and that, let me see if I can get this back here. Try to show that to you on this first drawing. The, the upper screen shows kind of the existing condition out there, and the lower screen shows what it would look like if the text amendment is passed to allow this. So you'd have more freestanding structures, but they would be smaller in two different locations. One thing that could be added to the draft language is that maybe the cumulative total of the menu board signage would not exceed 36 square feet. So, you know, you're, you can have one sign up to 36 square feet, or if you have this kind of split drive-through lane situation, then you can, as long as you don't cumulatively exceed 36 square feet, you can have more than the one sign to facilitate that, that type of arrangement. So, and the applicant is here, actually, to discuss any questions, any, you know, anything that y'all may have on this that are unclear about. They can, she can go through what their, their request specifically involves and why. But this is something that, before they got started with the renovations, I think some, some individuals with the McDonald's Corporation wanted to revisit this drive-through lane setup in this particular location to see if we could get some more flexibility. And from a staff, staff's perspective, it makes a lot of sense, what they're requesting in this context. So I don't know if y'all have any questions for me or the applicant?
Well, you were just suggesting, I assume, that the two signs would be limited to 36, because I can envision that that wouldn't be adequate to...
That's kind of what I'm calculating, too. The aggregate, I think, is going to be over 36. Because they've got, they've got, if you look at the plans, they've got a, what they call a pre-browse board, a digital pre-browse board, and a digital menu board on each drive-through. So a total of four, which I assume are the single 55s? Or are they double 55s?
Right, but the, sorry, Kristen Lang, I'm from Britt Peters. We do the engineering for McDonald's, 101 Falls Park Drive, Greenville, South Carolina. The last survivor of the Planning Commission meeting. I don't know if you can hear me. I am, too. I like it here. I've been here a lot. I was here for your first meeting last year, and now I'm here for your last. So, and I'm impressed that you've been here. The outdoor digital menu boards are 20 square feet. The pre-browse boards are 10 square feet. We do not have any flexibility, 20 square feet on the outdoor digital menu boards, the main menu boards, and 10 square feet on the pre-browse boards. We do not have any flexibility on square footage. With those old menu boards, the one on the top, that one is about 41 to 43 square feet.
But your, your aggregate would be 60. If I'm, my math is right, you got a 10 and a 20 times two drive-throughs.
Right.
Your total is 60 square feet.
Right. So on those old ones, we could take a panel off and have flexibility on the size of the menu boards. We, we don't with these outdoor digital units. They're, they're one size and one size only.
I take it's, the double 55s, they're somehow measured four by five or something like that? And that's, i.e., you're getting the 20 square feet on that?
I, I, I don't know how they'd measure them. I, I just...
And the single, that makes sense. The single would be the 10-square footer. So that's your pre-browses.
Right, that's the pre-browses.
And that's your menu board. Okay, the pre-browses and then the menu board.
That's the menu board, right.
Okay, all right. Now, we've got to figure it out. So what you're telling us is if we gave you an aggregate of 36, that's not going to cut it. So that's what we need to work on, is, is determine something for, for you guys. And going forward, I mean, if we have some other applicants within the MUTC, and we, we are, number one, delighted that you're here, and number that you're here, and number two, we're delighted to see that McDonald's renovated. So, what we don't want to do is hold this up. We would very much like to see it get brought into the 21st century. So, we are excited that you're here and working with us to work through this.
The 21st century includes taking down the arches in the sky.
It is not on. The one site plan that was in there with the red and the black, that one, the red is what you approved already, the site plan that was approved for the single drive-through lane, and the black was just to show you the impact to the site of adding the side-by-side drive-through, which is pretty minimal.
What are your thoughts on, you've got a fairly impervious site, which we wouldn't allow that today, the way that's set up, and you're entitled to some grandfathering. There, and I see some mitigation going on with removing one of the flower beds and creating a new flower bed in between the two drive-throughs. One of the questions that I had when I was looking at this the other day is you've got some areas that are now going to be, some areas of your parking lot that's now going to be delineated, no parking, with some hash, some hashing, some striping.
Oh, up in the top corner. That was, that was...
And also down, kind of at the bottom, if you look at the, kind of the bottom right-hand corner, there's a little triangle down there that's asphalt now, that, Mark, if you can highlight that one as well. What I was going to ask you about is, I mean, we'd love to see you actually turn that into flower beds and try to get a little bit more pervious surface on your site. Now, what we wouldn't want you to do is just put curb and dirt on top of the asphalt. We'd really like for you to go in there and take, pull the asphalt up, dispose of it, then put a curb in, backfill it, and actually put some shrubs or some plants in there to try to get you a little bit more. I mean, you are right next to a major creek. Obviously, any area that we can create on your site that helps kind of clean that water, granted, the vast majority of your water's going to go in the stormwater pond across the street and end up in the creek anyway. But I think it's a good step and a good attempt in the right direction to try to be good stewards at the best you can and take some of these areas that you were delineating as no parking anyway, and maybe turn them into flower beds.
So, the one at the back, that was just a comment when we had our meeting a couple weeks ago.
Yeah.
Predating this one. So, we just wanted an updated plan for this meeting and did that.
And we appreciate, and I do, I definitely see the conflicts with somebody trying to back out of that. I've not felt, I'm at that McDonald's almost daily grabbing my big unsweet iced tea for a buck oh nine. I'm delighted that you guys are doing this. I don't think you have a parking problem. I think, like you said, I think a lot of your business has transitioned over the years to the drive-throughs. So, I don't think you are short of any parking spots by any means, even when you got all your employees there, there's still plenty of vacancy parking spots. A lot of times I do go in. And so, I don't think that would create a hardship for you guys if some of these spots you've already delineated as no parking, if we could see those actually turned into flower beds.
So, I just was going to mention that the other thing is, at the back of the building, where you transition from the outside lane of the side-by-side drive-through, that radius all in there, we are actually adding pervious in that area, too. That the back of the building becomes much more pervious than it is right now with, you know, putting the radius in there for the drive-through. And at the front, my only concern would be, we have to get the truck, the delivery truck through the site. And when we start blocking with flower beds in the middle of the lane, sometimes that impacts the delivery truck radius. So, we would have to look at that. We'd have to run the truck on the site and see how it goes through there. But because the truck runs opposite to the traffic flow, it doesn't go in with the traffic flow, it runs opposite.
Okay. So, you have some sort of loading dock, is what you're saying, during your off-peak hours? You're saying you need some of those areas for the truck, the cab of the truck to extend into?
It's just, right there, it's a turn, and sometimes it takes more room at the turns to make the turn. So, I think the way we drove the truck in here was through that back driveway.
Okay.
I can think that's an admirable goal, Noah, but there's another, I think, even more practical reason why it might not work, and that's because the irrigation would be very difficult to get to those spots, would it not?
Well, they're not new isolated spots, they're up against existing flower beds. So, I mean, they would just tie into existing flower beds. I just, there was a couple of areas in there that have been hashed as kind of a no parking area. There's one flower bed being removed, which to me looks roughly in size to the new flower bed being created in between the two drive-lanes. And so, I felt like that reasonably mitigates that impervious surface. The, but I just thought those might be good candidates if you could. Obviously, the truck, and we want your trucks to be able to get in and move around. I'm still kind of struggling exactly how that would inhibit the truck movement, but it very well might.
Yeah, I think the areas, and I noticed that when I was looking at particularly the northeast corner, you know, where they're striping that area, that to me was an opportunity to add curbing and put a landscaped area there up here in the corner. Then, like Noah said, perhaps maybe looking at this area here, too, as an opportunity to add more greenery to...
Like I said, it's tying in with the existing flower beds, so I think it would address Roseanne's concern about, you know, landscaping or irrigation. So, I don't think that's creating a hardship. Obviously, it's a little bit more work than putting some paint on the asphalt, but it would just get you a little bit closer into having a site that would be closer to compliance.
So, this site also has a lot of perimeter shrubs that are, that are very grown. So, it, the, you know, as far as screening the parking lot, and that back corner has very mature shrubs in it, too.
Oh, yeah, I would definitely advocate removing any of those shrubs. I was just going to supplement those flower beds, so those two areas that Mark had circled.
So, I'm guessing we might have to come back for site plan approval?
No, no, I don't think so. I think, I mean, number one, we've kind of hashed out all this last year. You know, your change going to a double drive-through is kind of a radical change. We understand and empathize the reason why it makes sense. I mean, quite frankly, I'm sure I could get through the drive-through, get my iced tea in the morning a little quicker with this setup. I think we could still approve this subject to these, these items if, and quite frankly, if you showed that your truck movements was going to be interfered with these flower beds, I would be okay, given the staff, the authority to say, okay, then we can go back to this plan. I'd just like to see, I mean, you guys are doing some landscaping here, and you're going to be tweaking some things that has to do with around the building. It just, this would be a good opportunity to take some of these areas and add a little bit more, more greenery, more landscaping. But I definitely don't want to hold you guys up. I know you guys have, you know, you got it approved last year, and we're planning on, I think, trying to do it through the winter, and that, for whatever reason, that didn't work out. So, I'd very much like to get you guys approved and get you rolling and get your construction finished.
Here in the staff developer meeting, we discussed that north, that north corner right there, and one of the concerns, I think, was the cars that are in the drive-through are one thing, but the cars that were parked, once they back out and start north, I guess, then they've got to get out. And I think there was a concern that there might be, they might be competing in that corner, and that was one of the reasons, I think, that was pulling the parking spots out, not to curb it and put a flower bed in, but to give the space to where the people that would be coming out that were parked over on the right side there, when you would be able to get around the folks that were in the drive-through and get on out, because sometimes you have people coming in that other way. I'm like you, I'm an iced tea.
Well, and quite frankly, when I go, if I'm going in, I don't park on the east side of the building because of the conflicts with the existing stacking in the drive-through. So, I actually go over to the west side up against Firestone and park on that side of the building, because I know I can back out and get out of there a little quicker. Otherwise, I'm stuck, because somebody is stacked in the drive-through, and I can't, I'm stuck in my parking spot. I'm sure you guys deal with this all the time when you're trying, especially on older sites, you're trying to design the best traffic movements that you can. So, again, I would, I'd acquiesce to whatever the commission, I was just making a suggestion. I just thought that might be a good opportunity to add some pervious soil conditions that aren't there today.
Yeah, I agreed with that, especially in that northeast corner. That's kind of a new area. If they could, if they could take the asphalt out there and make it in more green space, that would be, that would be good. Something low, that's not going to be a visibility obstruction, but, you know, that would be a good suggestion, I think. As far as the ordinance, draft ordinance language, other than the menu board signage, how did you all feel about that Section 7? Does that seem reasonable? We only have, let's see, four drive-throughs in the mixed-use town center, well, five with counting Starbucks. So, you got the Dairy Queen, Buddy's, McDonald's, Taco Bell.
And you've got a bank, a couple of banks in there, too.
Yeah, yes, non-restaurant, yeah. I was just talking about restaurants that we have currently.
Menu boards. With private menu boards.
Yep. So, you know, that's not a lot, and, but, I mean, I don't know if y'all are okay with the way this is worded. It's, it gives you all a fair amount of flexibility, but it does establish some parameters within which you can make decisions, I think. As far as how to treat the menu board signage, you know, at, I mean, potentially, you could say you can't exceed 30 feet total per ordering point or something, if that's what they're proposing, is 30 square feet.
And I'm okay with the 60 square feet in aggregate, but I would not want to see a six-by-10
Right.
sign, you know, digital menu sign at any one particular location.
More freestanding.
But I'm okay with the 60-square-foot aggregate.
No, with no single sign being larger than 20 square feet.
Yeah.
Potentially.
I think that'd be a good...
Brett, how do you all feel about that?
If you're going to say 30 square feet per ordering station, do you want to put a limit on the number of ordering stations?
How about we just say, how about we just say 60 square feet total, no single sign being more than 20? In that way, we're not, because who knows what the next applicant's going to come before us? It'd give us a little bit more flexibility instead of having to do another text amendment.
Sounds good to me, that's what I would recommend, just cap a certain individual size.
That's the issue.
Cap the, a single board at 20, aggregate can't be more than 60. So, they can do a 20, a 20, a 10, and a 10, but they can't do any one board more than a 20.
We can add that in there, if that sounds good to you. Put that in an ordinance format for next time. Anybody else have any questions?
That would, it would be possible under that scenario to have three drive-throughs then with 120.
Well, that's true, yeah. You would be, I'm not sure I've ever seen three in a fast food, but I'm sure
Well, neither have I, but I'm just thinking about...
Somebody out there that's done it.
It said, you know, is, we want to limit the number of drive-throughs.
You know what? If we go back far enough, there, years ago, there was a Checkers drive-through where the old Hollywood video is, which is now an embryo storage clinic. And I'm going back 25 years, I think they might have had three drive-throughs. Anybody remember that old Checkers? There was a Checkers burger drive-through. And they were only drive-through, you couldn't even go in, which I'm sure was probably a challenge in the ordinance, the way we've got things written. But nevertheless, that was a long time ago.
Well, you have to think about the previous conditions in that, in that language limit this a lot.
Right.
You know, so your scenario is very unlikely that that would ever happen.
Is our goal to get McDonald's, get the text amendment, and get them on the agenda for next month for their site plan at the same time, run both those concurrent? Is that kind of what you were looking for?
We could do that. I mean, if you feel that they need to come to you with revised site plan, I mean, it's, you know, it's technically after the deadline, because we really weren't considering that, or if you're comfortable with the staff looking at it.
I'm comfortable with this. Do we need to reapprove their site?
Not in my opinion, no.
You're saying it's a minor change?
To me, it's a, it's a change that improves things.
Okay.
And it's been presented as part of this ordinance amendment, so it's, you know, it's not like they're requesting something that is, you know, more out of line with the ordinance. They're actually requesting, I think, changes that, you know, improve the site conditions, in my opinion.
Especially if we could get, you know, a few more square feet of pervious conditions.
Absolutely, yeah. If they could work on that and try to take, make an opportunity out of that, I think that would, that would be great.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I don't think it's, it's not an action item, is it?
No, it's just a workshop.
Okay, we're just kind of workshopping it, but, okay.
We'll put it together as an ordinance next time.
But for the ordinance, we'll be ready next month for an action, is that correct?
With a 60-square-feet.
Yes, we'll add that in there.
Aggregate, right.
Yes.
Does that, do you think we've addressed? You think we're going to be able to address your needs with that text amendment? Okay.
I think so.
Great.
All right.
How are we leaving this landscaping thing?
Sorry.
Just asking them, just going to ask them to give that consideration?
That's what I would do, yeah. I would ask them to evaluate that and see if they can work that in to make it a landscaped area. I mean, it's parking spaces now, so it's not like they're taking a existing landscaped area and making it hardscape, you know?
Well, they are doing a little bit of that, but it appears to me, just eyeballing it, that the new bed that they're going to create roughly mitigates the old bed they're taking out.
Yeah, it does, yeah. No, no. Yeah. Well, if y'all are comfortable with us working with them on that.
Absolutely.
I don't see that that needs a separate
I agree.
...site plan review, if y'all are comfortable with that.
I agree.
I am.
All righty, sounds good. We'll have it on for July 17th, I think it is.
Come back over the mountain one more time.
Well, isn't there...
And I hope you don't have to go back tonight.
Be, unless you're just dying to come back over from Greenville, I don't necessarily think that under that scenario, unless we feel like there's something else that we're missing, or, you know, something contentious, that she needs to come back over for the, it'll actually have to also go to the Board of Mayor and Aldman for first and second reading as well, which will be probably in August. But, but never, long story short, I really don't see the need for her to make the trip over again.
I think that's fine, yeah.
It's like coming over here.
With what I drove through Knoxville tonight, I'll pass.
Yeah, somebody drives over that mountain a lot.
Yeah, yeah, luckily, at least, hopefully, the rock slide has been all cleared out by now.
Yes, yes.
Thunderstorms and a tornado warning.
The tornado warning on the sign tonight, driving through, was interesting.
Yeah, thank God we don't have this.
Well, we appreciate you coming and be careful going back.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, yes, we have item number 10, appointment to Stormwater Advisory Committee representative. This has to be somebody from currently on the planning commission.
Yes, it does.
I'll make a motion to appoint Louise Povell.
Second, almost in favor. We just hope, without her being here tonight, she accepts.
Was that because she's not here today?
That's what, that's your punishment for not being here.
Yeah, I don't think she, I don't think she knew about that.
Great, Ron.
She did. Send her a congressional or a email.
Yeah, she has already been involved with interest in the stormwater, so...
Yeah, she has an interest in stormwater matters, yeah.
Item number 11, discussion on the planning commission procedures is applied to the number of significant comments that remain on plans intended to come before the commission and how to address approval of subject twos that are not taken care of in a timely manner.
This is a workshop discussion item, and really, we're just asking for your feedback on a couple of issues that really have been issues for a while, and the staff, you know, feels like you may want to consider formalizing some procedures on subject twos and projects that receive subject two approvals, but the subject twos kind of linger on and they aren't taken care of in a timely manner. Those are things that, let me just put up a couple of, I just culled out a few subject two categories, so, you know, certainly, there's some plans that come before us where the subject... the subject twos are items that are not a problem, there are a lot of times, they, they wouldn't be able to have that item at the time it is presented to the planning commission. For example, a notice of coverage is oftentimes, that takes a little bit longer to run that through TDEC, and, so, you know, that would typically not be something they would even have the ability to have in place before they come before you all. And then letters of credit, drainage permit fees, you know, typos, clerical errors, as long as they're not widespread, would be considered acceptable subject twos. But then we get some things that are subject twos or have been, that are pretty significant, you know, major missing information, information that is really design-related and could affect the design significantly when that comment is addressed. We feel that sometimes an applicant may come before you all, and, and you all are put, and the staff frankly, are put in an awkward position of approving something with, you know, when something really wasn't ready for you all to take action on. And we've had a number of projects over the years where there's been, you know, numerous subject twos, some of which would require pretty substantial resubmittals, that then the staff is kind of responsible for trying to clean up and make sure that those get addressed, that we interpreted your action properly, and it just puts everyone in a, in a little bit of an awkward situation. And it really frankly is, is unfair to the different designers that we have. You know, if, if a designer takes the time to go through our requirements and make sure that when they submit their package, that it's very complete, you know, that person should be rewarded with a timely review and approval process, whereas somebody that just throws something together to get it within a deadline, but it's really very incomplete and requires the staff to review this two or three, four times, then, you know, from the staff's perspective, that should be something that would not be considered for action. So they would hopefully get the message that they need to spend a little bit more time on their plans before they submit them and don't, and don't make the staff essentially the, the quality control for some of these projects, which unfortunately happens more, more often than it should. So what we drafted was just maybe some language that, as you know, next month is the annual meeting where we appoint officers and review any changes to bylaws and things like that. So this may be an opportunity to consider something in writing that could formalize how subject twos are addressed, to give both the staff and the planning commission some cover when you have, you know, something that is still on the agenda, because we do have to get agendas advertised within a certain timeframe. So sometimes we don't have plans resubmitted until the agenda's already been advertised for notification purposes. And, you know, when that item is, has been resubmitted, if it's still, in the staff's opinion, incomplete, then, you know, it would be helpful to have some, you know, policies in a resolution format preferably, that we could refer back to in recommending at the meeting that that application be postponed. And in the case of a subdivision plat, if the applicant hasn't signed the waiver for the planning commission acting on, on their request, then if the application is incomplete, the staff would have to recommend denial of that plat, and that's consistent with the state law. So you, you don't have as much flexibility with acting on those as you would with a site plan, for example. So similar to that small cell structure, there's certain shot clocks that apply to different types of items that might come before you, and you have to take action on them one way or the other, so. So I don't know if you all have looked, had a chance to look through this, this language, if you think it sounds reasonable, or if you have any comments or questions about that, or if you think it's something that's even needed in the first place.
Mark, I have a few comments.
Okay.
One, let me get a little historical perspective, and I wholeheartedly agree that we need to do something to codify the situ, and help the situation.
Yeah.
From a perspective standpoint, once upon a time, we felt that, and particularly the chairman at that time, and myself being engineers, felt we were literally being used, and the staff was being used at these meetings to be a designer review meeting.
Agreed.
I mean, it was pages of comments.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, pages. And so, you know, we, we, we dealt with that issue, but we, of course, shifted that more back to you all being, you know, running interference and filtering for it, but it's, obviously, it seems to have gotten, you know, worse again at that level, anyway. So codifying something to deal with that, I would wholeheartedly recommend that, and in favor of doing something.
By the way, it's something that's been adopted, it's been presented at a public meeting as a resolution, and, you know, it's not just, well, we just don't feel like that this is complete, or.
Well, we established the expectations.
Absolutely.
Formally.
Yes, yeah. And that's what we haven't done historically. We have not codified it.
No, we put you in a position to, to deal with that verbally with, or written was, however you had to, and deal with the situation applicant by applicant.
Yeah, that's right.
You and I have discussed the fact that some of, we get some project in, and you all spend hours on it, we spend a couple of months at the meetings or something, and then you don't hear back from them anymore.
Yeah.
Period.
Well, that's another, that's another element in this. It's the last, basically, the last paragraph of this draft, is talking about, you know, if you get a approval that has some subject twos, if they don't address those subject twos within some timeframe, the language here is just a hundred and eighty days, but that's, you know, up for discussion certainly, that, that application would actually then be considered void, and they'd have to come back through the whole process again. And this, this happens actually very, very frequently.
Yes.
You'd be surprised.
Have to reapply and pay the application fee again.
That's, that's exactly right.
I think one eighty is, is too lenient.
Well, that's, like I said, that's for discussion, I mean.
I think, I'm looking.
We'll just throw it out as a timeline for.
Well, I'm looking at the first two sentences here. The first one is subject to interpretation, it's subjective, large, what is large, you know, what is significant, so forth. But I do like the next sentence, that does seem to qualify it somewhat by saying, should be as complete as professionally practical. I think, as Ed has pointed out, there are engineering standards, certainly, and design standards, architectural standards and whatnot that.
Yeah, there are expectations.
That should be followed, and I think this kind of captures that.
CFC type process.
Professionally practical, I think, does narrow it down considerably. But I, I would propose that that hundred and eighty days be more like ninety, myself.
Mark and I have been talking about the fact that sometimes it's putting together the financials that seem to be a holdup. How, how long does that take, Noah? I realize it varies project to project, but.
I get concerned about the ninety days. I mean, there are some times when you're dealing with TDOT, it just takes a lot longer than you think it's gonna take. I, I think a hundred and eighty days probably is the right number. I, I think that there are, there are a lot of other details that do get worked out, and sometimes we do approve plans that are never built, and because the, after they've got a plan that's been approved, then they take it and try to go get their financing, what, what Rita was saying, and that can take time. So I, I mean, I think that, my instinct is ninety days feels too short, that a hundred and eighty days probably is the right, right amount of time to be able to give somebody to work through those deals. And before, we really haven't, we just kind of left it open-ended. I mean, think, if you think about the McDonald's site plan, we approved that in October of two thousand eighteen, so if their ninety, their ninety days have already come and gone. And so they'd have to start back over again, and I, I don't necessarily think that's the fair thing to do. Of course, you know what? Quite frankly, their hundred and eighty days has probably come and gone as well.
Yeah, but the two, there's two kinds of situations, though.
Well, I mean, they address.
You've got some that they're control, and you've got, that might be ninety, and there's something that's up to a hundred and eighty if you're dealing with the government.
McDonald's addressed the subject twos of their site plan approval. They did address those.
Well, even all their letters, and, I mean, so they're eligible for a, for a permit?
Yeah, yeah, they just decided, I guess, at a corporate level, that they wanted to revisit that drive-through setup.
The, the, I, I do think it's important, in interest of transparency, to try to set these expectations out there in a, in a way, i.e. a policy or codify it. I think it's important. I, I do see the staff, being abused is not the right term, but it's, they probably feel like they're being abused.
Used.
Uh, used, where, especially when we see some of the same comments over and over again, I'm not gonna try to pick on any particular projects, but there's, there was a project that this board saw that we probably had before us, I don't know, it felt like ten times, maybe it was six or eight times, that was a struggle, and there's a lot of the same comments over and over again, that the staff's like, well, they, you know, they still haven't, they're expecting us to find it again, and I think that's unfair to the staff. I think in interest of efficiency upstairs, I think this would help. It's, it's gonna take a while to feel those effects, but I think this is a really good step and a fair step in the right direction about letting the consultant community, i.e. the civil engineers are predominantly the ones that are gonna be dealing with it, surveyors would deal with it as well on, on a plat level, but I think it's, being transparent with them and letting them know, hey, these are our expectations, and if you get kicked at next month's meeting, this is the reason why you got kicked next month's meeting, just because, it's not because we don't like you, it's because that your plans quite, aren't ready for the planning commission, and they're still an incomplete set. So I, I like where we're going with this. I do, I would, I'd be really concerned about tightening it to ninety days. I think a hundred and eighty days is, is appropriate.
Well, I certainly can defer and understand what you're saying, that, but I, I like Ed's comment about if it's outside their control, then that's understandable, that's the reason for it taking longer than the ninety days. But I'm a new member on the plant, relatively new now, on the planning commission, but I've just been amazed at the number of approvals we've given with so many subject twos that appeared to me that could have been resolved by the architecture or design team or the engineering, whatever, might have been appropriate.
You would be surprised at the number we used to see.
We, I remember seeing the days we'd see seventy or eighty.
Yes.
Over a hundred on one project.
So, you know, maybe, maybe a hundred and eighty days might be appropriate if we get some of these other menial subject twos out of the way, you know?
One of the things that always makes me really mad when I see them are the, like, they numbered the pages wrong, or they've got the wrong date in there, or little things like that, that no business ought to put something like that out. But, but Mark gets those, and he's sitting there going, you need to number the pages consecutively, or you need to put the name of so-and-so in here. And those are, are very, that just makes me mad to see that.
It's an editing job that should have been done in the, in the office.
That's back to quality control, I think you, you have to look at it that way. What is puzzling to me is, you know, I come to the, to the staff developer meetings and I see ten subject twos, and then, and then it comes to the planning commission, and I see the same still, ten subject twos. They've not addressed them. I mean, it's like.
It happens sometimes, yeah.
You know, did you not get it? Why didn't you, why didn't you look at that? Yeah, I can understand if you have, or you have a lot of public input, like what we have on some projects, I mean, it could, could delay things, but, you know, it's, so the one eighty, I guess, is a good number, because.
I think the one eighty is a good number. I mean, there's gonna be some things where the developer is, is gonna need some guidance. If, if, if the developer's trying to, is having a tough time, is trying to stay exactly in between the lines that the staff would like the developer to be in, then the developer needs some guidance from, from the planning commission, and that's gonna be where the staff's gonna make a recommendation, just like, you know, we did with the, with the cell tower, that, you know, I, the developer with the cell tower, the cell pole, knew that we really didn't like that cell pole on Heron Road. And the reality is, is they didn't make any revisions to their plans, they were, they were looking for this body to give them some relief, which we were reluctant to do. And so I think there's, I, I kind of, I agree with the philosophy the staff is going with here, because you just can't say it's a hard and fast number. You can't say, well, any more than ten subject twos, we're throwing you out. That would be the easy thing to do, and I thought about that, I said, but you know, every, every project's a little bit different, especially when, when we were in.
Not, not all subject twos are created equally.
And that's exactly right, not all subject twos. And now, some of them are, are frustrating for the staff, and some of them should be just downright embarrassing on the consultant that prepared it. I mean, there are some dumb things in there that we all kind of scratch our heads going, I, you know, that, that shouldn't have made it to this body. I mean, you should have a little better quality control in your office to, to do that. And, you know, these, in this environment, in this economy, they're busy and, and, and things slip through. I don't necessarily think they should be punished for it, but I do think that this gives some meat on the bone for the staff to say, hey, you've got some things that are extraordinary here, that are not boilerplate subject twos, and i.e., you're not gonna be heard this month. And I can assure you, a consultant is gonna learn really fast when they have a real mad applicant or frustrated developer who says, now, you're, you're costing my project thirty days because of all your, you know, your silly typos, or, you know, some information that they, that you didn't provide, that you should have provided. So I think it'll, I think the, the guilty parties, and there's probably some civil engineers that are worse than others, I think they will correct their behavior pretty fast when they start getting bumped. And, and I think this is a fair way of saying that, hey, here it is in our policy, in full disclosure, you know, why don't you read this before you apply? And, and that way, the staff doesn't have to be the bad guy. Say, hey, you know, these are things that you should have taken care of that aren't, haven't been taken care of, or these are things that we asked you to take care of months ago, and there were two weeks ago in a staff developer that would have been fairly easy to address. So I, I, I think this is a, a real good direction. I think all of your language in here makes a lot of sense, and I think the, I think the hundred and eighty days, and you know what, at some point in the future, the hundred and eighty days, we feel like it's still too long, we could address it. If it's too short, we could address it again at some point in the future, but I think this is a, a real good draft that the staff's put together here.
Well, we could always make it no more than a hundred and eighty days, and the planning commission, if they're so minded, can, on a case-by-case basis, depending on the length of time that it might take or what was involved, like you say, if you're dealing with TDOT or some such, that it might take the hundred and eighty, then okay.
That'd make it part of our motion.
Yeah. Part of our motion, that's what I'm saying.
We see no reason why you can't do this within ninety days. Therefore, a part of the motion, I believe, these should be satisfied within ninety days.
I think it would help, the, the quicker that the, the items can get addressed, the simpler it is, I mean, it's kind of like, I don't know, have you ever, have you ever been reading a novel, and then you put down, you put down the novel and you pick up another novel?
To start back up.
You gotta start back over on it. And so I can understand when the staff is looking at these things, you're kind of starting over from scratch going, okay, now what, why did we do that? Why did we ask, you know, have that comment on there? And so I think the longer that that, that gets drug out, the more unfair it is to staff.
Well, we'll get a lot more work out of the staff if they don't have to do that, you know?
Well, if we can make the staff more efficient, you know, that, that would, that would, you know, improve their quality of lives, and, you know, hopefully, maybe save the taxpayers a few bucks from having to hire another staff member to be able to do these things, if we can make your office more efficient.
I think it's.
I think it's great that we have the staff.
You're talking about some of those, those work agenda items that keep getting pushed forward that you, that you were, that you wanted to complete? You can't complete? Yeah, I can understand.
I think it's great that we have a solution that the staff has presented that our resident developer thinks is a good idea.
I think it's a fair idea. I think it's, it's fair and that's what it's about. I, I think it's, it's fair and appropriate.
So the people doing the design, I would say the developers are also pushing them to get it through.
Sure they are. Sure they are.
You know, you don't have a large staff of people checking.
Yeah.
And like you do in a lot of, you know, I'll say nuclear type design or something that's more safety-based criteria where you have to have something like that. But there's a, there's a whole equation there of who's pushing who and how much it's costing and whatever that drives a lot of what we see. And that's not, that's not universal across everybody.
This is not isolated to the town of Fairmont. I can assure you, all the other planning staffs around the country all deal with. And the town's still going to deal with this, even after we adopt this policy, the town, there's still going to be some situations where, uh, the towns, you know, it's, it's still not the most efficient use of the, of the staff's time to have to keep re-reviewing the, the same mistakes or the same omissions over and over again.
We can put it in a resolution format if that's all right.
Yes, yes, definitely.
All right.
And believe it or not, it is a lot better than it used to be before this, we had the staff developer meetings.
I remember one that had over 120. Not going to say what it was.
I can remember making a speech, I think, it turned into a lecture of it. Didn't want to see it again.
So we'll see this next month? Is that your plan? Okay. In a, in a timely manner. So approval of utilities, we have no utilities, is that correct? Okay, the June 20th meeting of the Fairmont Municipal Planning Commission is adjourned.